Twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one is now in session. Would you stand, join me in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill, President of the Board. To my left is Vice President, Commissioner Barb Lewis. To my right is fellow Commissioner Jeff Pinton. Don, our Deputy Administrator, is with us today as well as Sarah and Jennifer. Let's begin.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-zero, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-zero. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today, so that brings us to item number three, resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-one, in the matter of approving purchase orders on announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR one-one-one-nine, memo transfers in batch number MT APR one-one-one-nine, and procurement card payments in batch number PC APR one-one-one-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-two, in the matter of accepting the treasurer's report for the month of October, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-two. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-three, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of annexation petition from agent for the petitioner Sarah Radcliffe Esquire, attorney at law, Kephart Fisher LLC, requesting annexation of two-point-nine-three acres of land in Berkshire Township to the village of Sunbury.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-three. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-four, in the matter of re-electing and electing members of the Delaware County Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a resolution. This is the Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund, and annually we're required to re-elect, is the correct term used for this board, the two are two members, one being Brad Ewens to be reappointed, and then Sheriff Martin requested this year that Chief Deputy Jeff Balls will be appointed or elected to the board, so we recommend their approval.
Any questions or comments? As always, you always thank those who are willing to serve.
Yeah.
Call the Board.
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd also like to take this opportunity, if I could, to introduce the newest member of our team. Julie Datko joins us today, and hopefully Nicole will...
Are you required to do a five-minute speech on your first day?
She can do that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Actually, I let her in this morning.
You did? I saw him come in the pregnant room.
Piling with perfect.
Stuck him to the door. Thank you.
Welcome.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-five, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation for the Victims of Crime Act grant.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Lewis. Say it with Commissioner Benton. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Ford from the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. The Prosecutor's Office is requesting supplemental appropriations for the Victims of Crime Act grant to allow staff funds for the remainder of two thousand twenty-one. There is enough cash in this fund to allow for these appropriations.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-five. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-six, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permits. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Benton. Say it with Commissioner Lewis. I split the... Discussion?
Morning. Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. These are just routine utility installation permits, and recommend your approval.
We really both wanted to be first on this one. Momentous moment, yeah.
Any questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-seven, in the matter of approving owner's agreement for a Pyatt Preserve Extension Section One, Pyatt Preserve Extension Section Two, Woodcrest Crossing Section Four, and Adventure Church.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
So these are our standard development agreements involving the street and stormwater improvements for a couple of single-family subdivisions. Pyatt Preserve includes fifty-seven lots. That's being developed by D.R. Horton. And then Woodcrest Crossing, that is another MI Home subdivision, and that includes twenty-seven lots. The Adventure Church is, and then that was located on Gray Parkway.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-seven. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-eight, in the matter of approving a right-of-way acquisition service agreement with Dunrobin Associates LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
We're asking for your approval on this professional services agreement with Dunrobin to help us with appraisals on the Berlin Station projects. We've got actually two different projects on Berlin Station. One is at the high school, the intersection of Pyatt Road and Berlin Station, and the other project is located at Braunmiller Road. And so we'd like to retain Dunrobin to help us with the right-of-way for those.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-eight. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-one dash one-one-four-nine, in the matter of approving the platyp subdivision for Millers Brook CAD.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
This is a five-lot common access drive subdivision in Harlem Township. It's been through the required county approvals and ready for your approval at this time.
Question or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two-one dash one-one-four-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
We have about seven minutes before we can start conducting the viewing, so that brings us to administrator reports.
And I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Lewis?
I don't have anything.
Well, that puts a lot of pressure on Commissioner Benton here.
I got to fill seven minutes here. We could talk about each one of the Buckeyes touchdowns over Michigan State this weekend.
Sad.
Oh.
Because they had a lot of them, a lot of them in the first half, but we won't go there. I feel sorry for Sparty fans. It was a rough game. Of course, two rough games in a row for our clerks, Purdue game and then Michigan State. But anyway, we're here to talk about county business, other than sports. The Recorder Award, Recorder got an award last week from the State Association or State Recorder Association, and got the press release here. It is a, she got the twenty-twenty-one Gold Quill Award at their annual winter continuing education conference, and congratulations to Melissa Jordan for her excellent work. Quote was, "Melissa Jordan is a dependable, steady, intelligent asset to each and every one of us," and by the ORA president. So anyway, again, congratulations to her in recognition of her work in our Recorder's office. Our leaders here in the county continue to win a lot of awards, and that's symbolic of why our leadership is so good and we're getting so much, so many things done. And we had a Central High Youth Center meeting on Thursday, the board meeting, and that's where we were talking about the two additional board members. We, I mentioned this last Thursday in the session, and done some more research in the meantime. The two additional board seats did get approved, the one of those being Logan County, which is joining COIC, and the other one being Delaware County. So we did get the second seat, the second new seat, assigned to Delaware County. Now, what that means is we have to appoint another member to that board. Right now, the bylaws require that person to be a commissioner. So it doesn't mean the bylaws couldn't be changed. I think the board is very agreeable to changing if we decide we don't want to have two commissioners there on a regular basis, because it is, it's a hike over to Marysville and back, sometimes a very quick meeting. So anyway, and we did check, you know, so the bylaws can be changed, but we do have to appoint, the next meeting isn't until February, so it's not anything that needs to be done right away. The judge, Judge Hemenowski, could be, by statute could be. Now, by bylaws, can be. So if the bylaws were changed, Judge Hemenowski could be. Now, he and I have had a couple of conversations about it. He's thinking he's probably overly, overcommitted as it is, so he's probably not interested in being that appointment. But anyway, that's, that's the latest, so we'll have to work on, you know, whether we want one of the commissioners to take one of the seats, take that additional seat, or we want to change the bylaws and have someone else be appointed, such as the administrator.
I called Judge Hemenowski this morning after reading the email, and what I, what I offered, if you want to do it, fine, I'm willing to do it. And if Judge Hemenowski later scheduled free up enough that he could do it, I think it'd be, I think we all agree Judge Hemenowski is a logical choice, but his schedule doesn't really allow for that right now. And in that conversation, there was some conversation about maybe doing away with the commissioner requirement. I thought that was a bad idea. I think the first commissioner should be, the first position should be a commissioner. In the two counties' union and Delaware County, where there would be two, I think it's, I don't see a problem with the second one being a non-commissioner.
Right.
So if we ever change the bylaws, I think that would be the suggestion. I would hate to see where you end up with seven people numb or...
Yeah, no.
It's not for the financial part of it. But if you're willing to do it, great. If you're not, I'm willing to do it in the interim period until things change or go a different direction down the road, so.
What about someone from his office, staff attorney from his office?
Judge Hemenowski's office?
Yes.
That, if the bylaws are changed...
If, if the bylaws are changed, right, right, yes, right.
I think the board, the COIC board, has to approve it.
Okay, sure.
And I think the judge has to approve it.
Okay.
So...
Okay. I guess, and the reason I say that is because they have the expertise that we don't have as commissioners, and we have a commissioner representative, Commissioner Benton already on the board. I guess I'd like to see someone from, from the courts, if possible, and in particular, you know, since, since this is juvenile-related.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's entirely, I mean, his, he assigns the inmates, so it's entirely within his court.
He assigns the inmates.
No other court assigns to, to the COIC.
Okay, okay.
But when we just think about it and...
Yeah, exactly.
When appropriate, and then get back to us.
Yeah, we got three months. Next meeting is like late in February.
Okay.
And there's nothing urgent. I mean, Logan County doesn't officially join until January, anyway.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
So, yeah. Okay, good thoughts. We'll move forward on the plan in January then.
Anything else?
No, that's it. That's all we got.
Can I have one thing, and it'll take a minute at least, so we'll, in our CCO board meeting Friday, we had a conversation about the opioid regions, and we have, in that board meeting, five of the seven people in our region are on the board.
Oh, good.
And we were hoping to get a meeting, but we couldn't get it put together because people had conflicts. So it's going to be a Zoom call today at four o'clock, so if our budget meeting goes long from three, I will excuse myself about ten till, and the seven counties are going to be in a Zoom call. As you, the challenge with this is it's made up of commissioners, cities, and townships. So somebody's got to take the lead on this, and so that's kind of the purpose of the call, to try to get us at least starting down the road of how that's going to look. So nothing to share with you, other than we're going to talk at four o'clock today.
Okay.
I did call Eric to see if he could replace me, because it was initially three o'clock, but he's on vacation. So that wasn't possible, so I asked him, and he agreed to move it to four o'clock, so I could be available. So, and again, we'll, again, it's just a preliminary meeting to try to get some beginning story.
Yeah, get some structure and, yeah, some decisions made.
And it's hard when you have these multiple counties. If you're one county, it's a little bit easier. But in our case, you have seven counties, and Commissioner Fix out of Fairfield County is the one that organized the meeting today, so thank you, I appreciate, thank you for that. I have nothing else, and with that, as we are regrouping forward to viewing.
Okay. It's nine forty-five. We have a viewing for the petition requesting the construction of improvements to Home Road and Green Meadows Drive, both located east of U.S. Route Twenty-three in Orange Township in Delaware County, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Well, it's not really a motion, so we don't have to...
Aren't we opening it? You don't have to have a motion to open it?
Oh.
It's just a viewing, not a...
A viewing?
Just a viewing, okay.
So we don't have to have a motion to open the viewing?
Nope.
Okay. Good. I retract my motion.
Okay, I will, I will kind of introduce what's going to take place here today. Welcome to the viewing for the petition filed by Kerbler Builders and others requesting the construction of improvements to Home Road and Green Meadows Drive, both located east of U.S. Route Twenty-three in Orange Township, Delaware County, Ohio. We have today with us Rob Riley from the County Engineers' Office, and he's going to familiarize us with the area, so we have a better understanding, and the proposed improvements through the use of drone videography and photography. With that, I turn this over to Rob.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you. Again, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. Good morning. Just to summarize, this is, as you already mentioned, Commissioner, really for your benefit to familiarize yourselves with what we're talking about, with the area, and the, I guess, scope and extent of these two projects. So we have a couple of different projects that this petition will potentially involve. I go back to, I guess, the resolution that your board approved several weeks ago. This was acknowledging receipt of the petition by Kerbler Builders. That petition was actually a requirement of Kerbler Builders as part of the development agreement for the Home Road Extension, Phase Two and Three. This goes all the way back to two thousand nineteen, when that agreement was approved between the county and Kerbler for the Orange area and apartments in the Slate Ridge Development. So in essence, as part of that project, Kerbler agreed to accept a special assessment on the residential portion of the Slate Ridge Development. This is a map showing where we're talking about. The green dash line is the portion of Home Road that was completed in September of two thousand twenty, and then the two red segments are the roads we're talking about today that involve this petition. Here's a little more detailed look. Green Meadows Drive, you can see to the south, is built. Home Road is built up to that. This would basically connect up to Lewis Center Road at two different locations.
How long of a road is that Green Meadows Drive extension there?
That would be roughly half a mile. Yeah.
And it connects to the roundabout, looks like, correct?
Correct. So the, you can just see at the top, we built a stub to the south as part of that roundabout project a few years ago, and so we'll be able to connect into that without even affecting the roundabout itself.
That, I, I think that's a really important finishing leg, if you will, of the Green Meadows Drive, because it will, it should divert a fair amount of traffic off Twenty-three and open up that corridor for further development with improved traffic flow, et cetera. Now, the Home Road Bridge over the railroad is going to be kind of the finishing touches of that area's improvement in the east-west corridor, but Green Meadows Drive is a real nice and important leg.
I fully agree with you, Commissioner. Actually, I'll go back up to this slide, just so, because I think that's worth touching on a little, a little further. This Green Meadows Drive extension, ultimately, when we have all the project segments done, will go all the way from Plares Parkway, which is just off the map at the south end, all the way up to Cheshire Road. It would be called North Road, once you get north of Lewis Center Road, but basically it's a parallel continuous road network between Cheshire Road, and so if you think about it, all the folks that live around the Glen Ross area, now we have a lot of the, you just approved an owner's agreement for Pyatt Preserve, which is just on the other side of the railroad off Cheshire. A lot of those folks want to get to the commercial areas to the south. This is the way, if I'm, if I'm living in that area, this is what I take. I don't go out to Twenty-three and fight with the traffic signals. I use this.
What's the timeline on, I know we've got part of the North Road extension done. Do you know what the timeline on the, the other part, because that's kind of the last missing link from Plares all the way up to Cheshire?
Yeah, so I guess you can see that on the map. Just Phase Two is what we're calling that. We have plans about ninety percent done for that. We've been in discussions with Evans Farm for some time. There is a development agreement that will have to hap, have to happen with Evans Farms to pay for the, I guess, the developer's share of that, but we'd like to actually go to construction starting next fall on that and have it wrapped up by summer of two thousand twenty-three. So that's, that's the timeframe as of now.
My understanding, today is just a viewing?
Correct.
And there'll be a hearing forthcoming?
Correct. We're not asking for any action by your board today. This is simply for your, so you know what's going on in the area. I'll move on. So this is a map showing the property owners. I would point out that Kerbler Farms involves two parcels, Kerbler Builders and Kerbler Farms. Those are the parcels that have basically consented to that special assessment on the single-family units. I'll point out that the original assessment was calculated based on one hundred and thirty single-family units. That was in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen. Since that time, Orange Township has, I believe they've approved a rezoning of basically the, the two Kerbler parcels you see, as well as, just to the west of Shackcroft, that is also Kerbler. So now there's another eighty-nine units of single-family that are zoned for those two parcels. And so in essence, what we have agreed to with Kerbler representatives is to expand that assessment from the original one hundred and thirty units to include all the two hundred and nineteen units. The difference, the other eighty-nine units being assessed would help pay for the developers' portion of Green Meadows Drive. So Green Meadows Drive was not contemplated with the original discussion. It was only Home Road. We have since added that within the last six months or so, and so that's, that's really why we're here today, or part of the reason we're here today. Another look at Green Meadows Drive. You can see that the road will actually avoid the, kind of the Village proper completely. It will be on the undeveloped land to the west. You can see a narrow strip. I don't know if, that narrow strip right there is actually old, dedicated right-of-way from the eighteen hundreds, when the village was originally platted. It's, it's half of, half of a street, so I think it's either thirty feet wide or twenty-five feet wide, something like that. So Village never ended up going west, so this is kind of the, here we are, a hundred and fifty years later, talking about completing this street.
So there's no right-of-way that needs to be purchased?
There will be right-of-way that needs to be purchased along basically that red strip, that red line. There's two property owners that, that will affect. So this is a look at the Home Road extension. You can see that really only talking about a couple of other property owners here. The Delco Water Company owns the, the large parcel, one hundred and eighty-three acres. You'll see a better picture here in a minute. And then years ago, I think it was twenty fifteen, roughly?
Forty-five. When we bought the farm?
Bought the Zarbaugh Farm, including the, the old Homestead. That parcel basically would be where the road will go, and so we, we control mostly all of the land that's needed for this project. We will have some narrow, kind of frontage strip takes along some of the abutting properties for the work on Lewis Center Road. And then finally, there will be a connection to Wetherby Street. Wetherby was platted, I don't know, fifteen years ago, probably, with extension to the west in mind. And here we are, talking about that road extension.
What subdivision is that, Rob?
That would be...
Because I know it exits and enters on Old, or...
Yeah, Park Lawn is, there's two, there's Park Lawn North and South. I want to say Village is Allen Creek, but I'd have to double-check on that. I can, I can let you know. But it's, that was plaid probably in the early two thousands. This section might have been, I don't know, as I said, fifteen years ago.
Now, the one, the parcel that's marked dedicated right-of-way, we own that?
That's correct.
Okay. So we don't have any parcels to take along this route?
No more entire parcels. We will have some frontage strip takes along the Michael Property, as well as, I believe, the Savon Property, east and west, and that'll be for the work, basically tying the roundabout back into Lewis Center Road.
Okay.
So here's some aerial imagery we got a few weeks ago. This is from the, the new roundabout at Lewis Center, North Road looking south. You can see kind of the path that the new road will take for Green Meadows Drive. This is looking north from where Green Meadows Drive currently ends. Now, this is the Home Road extension. This will go northeast from that same intersection up over the railroad. The total, we're looking at basically a two-span bridge. Just as a reminder, there's two different railroad tracks there, CSX and a Norfolk Southern. We are progressing through that final design with HDR, our consultant right now. We've touched base with the railroad and started that railroad review process with them to get their comments on the preliminary design. Basically, it will be a two-span bridge with a pier right between the two railroad tracks. Just something to kind of sock, sock away in your memory. The railroads are going to be asking for, that we accommodate future railroad tracks. CSX will want a third track. CSX will want a second track accommodated with that bridge. So now, instead of that bridge being roughly two hundred feet, it grows to two hundred and fifty feet or more. So a more expensive bridge, but we expect that will be a requirement of the railroad.
And I'm sure they're going to help support that additional cost.
They will very likely not cover any of the additional costs, except for their statutory required participation in the project, which I believe is fifteen percent. This is Home Road looking south from where the new roundabout will be. Looking, you can see the Delco Reservoir there at the top of the screen. And so the schedule, if the petition is granted, and again, we're not asking for any action today, but we would expect to reconvene for a hearing on this. Assuming the petition is granted, we would start construction on Green Meadows Drive in August of next year, excuse me, start construction in September. We do have an OPWC grant request in. You may recall, your board approved that a few weeks ago, and so we were asking for five hundred thousand dollars towards that project, and then if we're successful, we would start in September. It's about a two-month project to connect that. For the Home Road extension, we've broken that Phase Four into two parts. Phase A, which is the railroad bridge itself, we think that will, our plan is still to go to construction in two thousand twenty-five, and that'll take a relative full construction seasons to complete, so I don't expect to have that done sooner than December of two thousand twenty-six.
Is Green Meadow be done before then?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And then...
Basically, a year from now.
Yes.
That'd be nice.
And then Phase Four B of Home Road, which is the tie-in at Lewis Center. We have those plans about ninety-five percent done right now. We will be going out, talking to the affected property owners here very shortly, and then working towards starting construction late next year on that, wrapping it up two years from now.
So you would... So you would, you would go ahead and start that, that roundabout construction without the bridge?
That's correct.
So the bridge would just be the ultimate connection between east and west?
That's correct. So Phase Four B will be from that roundabout at Lewis Center Road up to this Weatherby Drive intersection, stopping just to the south of that. And then closing the loop at the end with the bridge.
Now, Pyatt Wood is obviously scheduled to extend down and connect into that roundabout.
Yes.
What's, what's the construction schedule on that? Do we have that at this point?
Yes, we have a development agreement with Evans Farm involving that. I'm trying to see if I can get to a picture here.
Maybe the very first one.
That might be the best look at it. Let's see if I can zoom in a little bit. But yes, so we have an agreement in place to, basically, the developer will be connecting from Shanahan Road, which is at the top of the screen, south, past the proposed Jennings Sports Park. The requirement is to have that done by the end of twenty twenty-three. Now, that, that depends on the schedule of Jennings Sports Park. But as of the last, last time I looked or heard, they're starting work on Jennings Sports Park right now. They're moving dirt. So the goal, fingers crossed, would be to have Pyatt Road connected all the way to Shanahan Road and at least Phase Four B, which is the roundabout at Pyatt Road, done by the end of twenty twenty-three. So the only thing left we'll have is the bridge over the railroad at that point.
Yeah, and there, there again, is another important diversion of traffic from twenty-three and to Pyatt Road corridor, all the way up to, well, eventually, it would be all the way up to thirty-six.
Yes. If you haven't been passed there within the last week or two, we worked recently with Berlin Township. They widened Pyatt Road from Peach Bowl to Cheshire Road. So that's now a new, modern, two-lane section. It's, you know, twenty-four feet wide. It used to be pretty narrow. I've passed some school buses along there and felt like I'm just going to be, just about be in the ditch, so.
Yes. I noticed that too. I sometimes take that, yeah, narrow.
So that is all I have for you today. Happy to answer any more questions you may have.
Appreciate the viewing, and there'll be a hearing, I assume, in the next couple of months?
I think so. One of the reasons we don't want to necessarily take any action today, we have some conversations we'd like to have with the two other property owners that are affected by the Green Meadows Drive extension. That we have, I've had a conversation with one property owner, I want to have another conversation. One of, one of the things we'll want to talk about is whether there's going to be any cost participation by those property owners. Something, obviously, with the Kerbler having petitioned for the assessment as part of their development, so that's a very thing that, easy thing to act on for your board and for us to recommend. We want to be sensitive to the development timeframe for those two properties that you're looking at on the left side. It's reasonable to expect that at some point, those are going to be developed. I have spoken with Mr. Shackrough, and I believe there's an intent to develop at some point, basically just waiting for the right time. And so one of the conversations we'll have to have is whether or not it's fair to have an assessment on those properties as well. One of the options we can consider is basically deferring an assessment until the property is developed. But certainly, we want to do what we can to be fair, so that, you know, one property owner isn't paying for this entire thing when there's potentially two other property owners receiving benefit from it, so.
Are both those parcels landlocked?
They are. Well, Shackrough is not now, and neither is the Rata Bush, because they have frontage, Rata Bush has frontage from North Road now.
Okay, the stub?
Or Green Meadows, I guess, yeah, excuse me, the stub. And then, let's see, let me get to a better map here. Yeah, I guess the Shackrough property is technically landlocked now, but very shortly would not be.
But they're, they're not landlocked in the, in the near future because of the Green Meadows extension.
That's correct.
It's very beneficial for those two landowners to get this done. To make it obvious.
They couldn't develop Eden Willows without the extension.
Yeah, so we don't like to be in the position of recommending an assessment against the property owner's will. Clearly, we don't want to impose an unreasonable burden, cost burden, on a property owner that just isn't ready to develop. But by the same token, clearly, there's a development benefit for this road. So that's something we'll have to talk about further, and we'd just like a little bit more time to do that.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then the viewing is closed.
And do we have? We can be in recess because the budget meeting has a separate meeting, so.
We have no need for executive?
Nope.
So we, we are in recess until, we, we don't need to recess, does it, because?
No, you're adjourned. You don't need to recess.
Okay, misunderstood you, because I didn't think that was the case.
Until.
Till one o'clock.
The hearing is resumed.
We'll have a budget hearing continuation at one o'clock, but that's under a separate. So if there's nothing else to bring before us.